Well, I think we should probably get started then. I'm sure they'll join if you can keep an eye on the waiting room, Ed. That'd be great.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:03. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States
of America and to the republic
for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Good. All right, Ed, would you mind reading our preamble?
I'll be happy to. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of the screen, type in "meeting ID 8723811568", password 206520, hit "Join". Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV Charter Spectrum, Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at select board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled select board meeting, it will be read at that select board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised select board meeting, it will be read at the next select board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectmen@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy and public comments listed in the open time for the public on the select board agenda.
Thank you very much. Hi, John, how you doing? I'm getting a bunch of things at the same time. So anyway, anybody have any announcements, any words of gratitude? Gems of wisdom? I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We don't have a meeting until after the holidays, so if you celebrate Hanukkah also, I hope you're enjoying the celebration of lights. And I wish everybody is safe and happy holiday season, and please be very safe. I mean, this is going to be the year to keep it very quiet. We're seeing a surge in COVID cases because of a lot of gathering on Thanksgiving, so I just plead with folks to please let 2020 be the year of peace and quiet. And I also want to say thank you to Tammy and the Historical Commission for the sale of the calendars, and also to the Police Department for stuffing the cruiser. It looked like it was a very successful event. So thank you very much, Tammy. Did you sell a lot of calendars?
Actually, we sold 12, so that was really good. We are hoping to be out at the next toy drive that the Lions Club is having, which would be this Saturday. You'll be able to pull into the fire department area, and I think they're going to be set up at the gazebo. They'll do again, drive-through, and that is 10 a.m. until 2 p.m. So this Saturday. And again, the Historical Society will have calendars there for $15, cash or checks. And there's some great pictures of people in there.
Yeah, this is a beautiful calendar, actually. I love it.
Thank you.
And also wanted to thank the Lions Club. Didn't want to forget to mention them. They collaborated with the Police Department on the toy drive. And remember, it's unwrapped, you know, an original box or whatever, new gift for kids.
Yep. One other, Renee, I just want to say I really appreciate the lights this year down at the town hall area. The gazebo, I think, looks really wonderful this year in particular. And also a shout-out to the church, who last night put out luminaries to honor the eighth anniversary of the school shooting at Sandy Hook. And put out 26 luminaries last night. So if you haven't had a chance to go down and take a look at that, I would encourage you to do that and reflect a moment for the season.
Anyone else? Francine?
Just one other thing. Last Friday, around noon time, the Council on Aging through a food, a meal delivery program through Highland Valley Elder Services provided heat, ready-to-go and heat meals for 33 seniors in town. And they're planning on doing it again, you know, probably beginning in February. But it was the first time it was very successful.
Wonderful. Great, thank you. Anyone else before we start the official agenda? Okay, so we have no public hearings or appointments or resignations. We have no presentations, and so we can just go right into the select board reports if someone would like to start.
I can start if you'd like.
Sure.
Updates from Norris School. They moved to a full remote scenario until January 4. We believe this was, it was a good, you know, not the outcome that I think most people were looking for, but it certainly had its basis and well-reasoned thought from school committee superintendent, school nursing staff. Basically, you know, in short summary, the spike that's kind of occurred in Southampton has shown it has been, was brought into the school. I think it was three instances of students bringing it into the school. No showing, it's important to articulate that it was brought into the school rather than spread within the school, which there's a difference, you know, between the two. It had not been shown to spread within the school, but of course, it touched a number of people in close contacts in the quarantines with students and also with the teachers and the staff. It started to make staffing a bit difficult, also given the numbers of students affected in terms of being able to contact trace and do that effectively and quickly, given the numbers. So there were kind of high quantities of this, like that posed a bit of a challenge. It was reasonably thought that a lot of this was due to Thanksgiving. So for, you know, those reasons, mostly related to contact tracing, number of students, increased spike in the community, staffing-related concerns with absences related to the quarantines, you know, the superintendent decided that it was a good decision to close. And the closure is going to go through the Christmas holiday for similar reasons. It's going to extend past the New Year with the planned reopening of Monday, January 4 to return to the model that was in place prior to the closure, which at this point, just to summarize this for you, is the school is in hybrid from grades 2 through 6, where the, there's two cohorts. A and B goes, you know, A goes Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday being remote. Cohort B goes Thursday, Friday, you know. Wednesday is the remote day for all, and they kind of, they do the A, A, B, two days per week with three days remote. Kindergarten preschool through first grade are full in with Wednesdays off, so they experience full-day education, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being the cleaning day. That's for preschool through first grade. All students are kept at six feet in this scenario. And so that's kind of where they got to prior to the closure, and that's what they'll be returning to on the 4th, you know. Pending, you know, pending decisions by the school committee primarily, but also kind of improvements in the quarantine state and the teacher staffing issues and, you know, and those types of things. So that's kind of where we're at with the Norris School. They have a well-oiled machine there. I mean, I have to keep stressing that the Norris School Committee is made up of a very diverse bunch of very diverse opinions. Their votes are never five to oh. They strongly debate. They're all very smart and very dedicated individuals, and so there's a lot of good conversation in all of this and a lot of good debate. And then that coupled with like a great superintendent that's got a lot of history in another district that kind of signed up for this to help us out as an interim, but a lot of experience, a good leader, articulate individual with a good head on his shoulders, and so I couldn't be more pleased there. And then, you know, we have Eliza, as well as our principal, and another administration, our school nursing, led by Stephanie Foss, is great too. I mean, they're, they're all pulling in the same direction, and I think that they're making the right, I mean, to say that they're the right choices, I mean, that could be a matter of opinion, but they're clearly well-thought-out, and they have their reasons, and they all hold water. And so I think that they're doing the best that they can. And then, you know, with regard to Hampshire Regional, you know, the good news is that a lot of this stuff is not touching that, that school yet, even though we are the primary feeder to that school from a population standpoint, but the, it hasn't gotten brought into that school to the degree that it had been brought into Norris. And so their plans remain, remain the way they are with students coming back little by little and slow and steady, they're bringing them back, and they seemingly are having good success with that and keeping it at six feet. And, you know, Tammy, Tammy's on that committee and has outspoken on it, and they do, they have the same scenario as us. So I don't want to like say that our school committee, you know, the Norris School Committee is any better than Hampshire Regional. Like, they have great debates, lots of people going on there, good leader with Kristen, and obviously same superintendent, same nursing structure. And so like their meetings are long with dedicated people that are on different sides, and they figure it out. And I think we're doing a good job across the board there. I mean, if anybody has any specific questions, that was kind of the background on our school closure and what our plan is in the future. And the good news is that Hampshire Regional so far is still, you know, heading in the right direction, if that's, if, you know, if that's your opinion on the matter. I mean, they're balancing safety and education, and I think they're all doing a good job.
That sounds great. Any questions for Matt? Yeah, it's a tough, I mean, this is hard enough, but then to deal with the whole school situation is really hard. But they, the school committee is local, is still, is going to meet the week after Christmas and discuss, confirm the opening on the 4.
Yeah, they're going to meet, I think they're going to actually meet a few times between now and then to shore things up and to shore up a plan. But yeah, that's, it's not, nothing's set in stone, but that's, that's what they preliminarily voted on before they left the last meeting with the TBD to have several meetings to revisit the topic.
Somebody else like to report?
I'll jump in. Mine is fairly short tonight for a change. Nothing too special with the Board of Assessors. We obviously had our last joint meeting last week, which was the public hearing to set the tax rate, and that was discussed, and we've gotten through that process of setting the tax rate at $15.97. So the Board of Assessors will meet again, I believe, next week sometime. CONCOM, basically the tree cutting that needed to happen, if you recall, over a year ago with the famous microburst and getting the money from CPC, et cetera, et cetera, we were able to hire some tree people to go in over the last weekend or two and actually do the serious cutting of some of those that were really hanging, hanging trees that were quite dangerous. And so that has been completed, which will then allow for the work on the actual trail itself to get going under the Mass Trails Grant that we received, that CONCOM received. All the paperwork has been submitted for that, so they're ready to undertake a bidding process for the contracting, the workout to get those, the trails and everything redone that was in the grant. And I believe CONCOM has developed a short list of four or five vendors, possible vendors to give to Ed to start the bidding process on that.
I'll actually have to go up for a public bid sealed.
Oh, really? It's over a certain amount, is it?
It's over 50,000, so.
Oh, but they only, well, okay, I don't know. They only got 50,000 in the grant. They didn't, they didn't get all the money they wanted.
Yes, but they have another $17,000 in the
Oh, CPC.
Mass Trails match.
Yeah, from the CPC, right, okay.
Yeah, so their budget is 62.
Okay.
It doesn't, doesn't preclude those three vendors from bidding, but.
Okay. And then there will be a second phase of this Mass Trails Grant. We had been advised to not put everything in one grant when Diana Federman had written the proposal last year, and so she's working already on the second part of the grant that Mass Trails is expecting from Southampton. And this will be to largely work on the bridge replacement over the Manhan, the small walking bridge over the Manhan at Manhan Meadows. And that application is due in February, so she's already starting to work on that while getting the paperwork underway for actually implementing the first round. So lots of things happening in that regard. Another than that, CONCOM just had regular business, a couple of enforcement issues to look at, and then some notices of intent for renovation and/or new construction renovations over toward Pequot Pond, a couple properties, and then apparently a new construction at the corner of Valley Road and Route 10. And I think that's about it. Master Plan has not met. We are still going to wait on the final report from our consultant from PVPC, but knowing some of the issues that came up as priorities in there from the Master Plan Survey, one of those was the idea about solar. And PVPC had a webinar or report out recently, over the last week or two, to talk about a big, basically it's a solar guide, I guess I would call it. It's something that PVPC has been working on over the past two years with 11 different communities, and to focus really on large-scale solar installations. So again, these huge solar farms that want to come in and take off a huge block of supposedly open space in your town, they've put together basically a practical guide for municipalities about how to deal with these people, how to look at permitting, and so this would impact, obviously, planning, probably CONCOM if it's near a wetlands, zoning, how to worry about, or how to deal with the fact that some of these solar installations take up that valuable open space, grassland, cut down trees, et cetera, et cetera. So how do you marry the environmental aspect with some of this? It was very, very informative. So just thinking ahead, if we ever get to that point of looking at solar more seriously here in town, just to say that there is a practical guide already, it'll be finalized, I think, and issued actually in January, but it's quite extensive, sample forms, all the kinds of things you would need to understand what to do if there's a solar company interested in coming to town to put in a large solar installation. So that was very informative. And actually, our consultant, Ken Comio, was also working on that one, again, with 11 different towns. So yeah, that's about it, I guess, from my point.
Chris, that was your quiet week, right?
It was, actually.
Questions, Chris? Chris, I just had one question. You know the bridge over the Manhan? Well, is it the interest of the committee to have that be another suspension bridge, or is that going to be more of a solid bridge over the Manhan?
I mean, I'm not positive I can tell you that for sure. I'm thinking it's another kind of suspension bridge, but it's going to be out of a better material. It's going to be out of a non-slip, special kind of material, not the, you know, the boards and stuff that were there that are old pressure-treated boards that have arsenic and whatever else in them. So it's going to be much more environmentally sound, for sure. I honestly can't remember what it's going to look like, though.
I was just curious. Thanks. It's great to have all that be repaired.
Yeah, so they'll be working on it over the next few months, but hopefully by sometime it'll be available to be back in use again, so people can enjoy it.
Francine or John, do you want to?
Well, I've not had any meetings since our last meeting, but I do want to report that the PQB will be meeting this Thursday at 6 o'clock.
Oh, wow. Great. Anything, John?
Yep, I've got a few things. Finance Committee met last night, Ed and I attended. It was pretty routine, but a couple items that stood out. We have some PRFs that were approved that we'll discuss later on. And for the last couple of meetings, they were talking about committee assignments, and last night they did vote on committee assignments. Barbara Simborsky is going to be a voting member to the CPC, pleasure.
Thank you.
Ken Cole Sr. is going to be the voting member for the PQB, so they'll be at both those next meetings. Mary Syriak is going to be the liaison with Norris. No liaison for Hampshire Regional yet. And they also discussed having a liaison, although one's not required, to the Capital Improvement Committee. So Mary Syriak voted on that one because they felt the Finance Committee should be involved with that process from the beginning. So they're going to have a liaison, non-voting, of course, so I think that'll be good. And we're still missing one member to the Finance Committee, so if anybody else there is interested, you know, please contact Ed or even myself. Tomorrow, there's a Planning Board meeting that I'll be attending, and on Thursday, there is a Tech Committee meeting, so a full week of meetings, so I'll report back on those next meeting.
John, what did you say is happening Thursday?
The Tech Committee.
Oh, Tech.
In the Valley, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Any questions for John? Okay, so I have a couple, Council on Aging met, and as Francine said, they put together a dinner for 33 people last Friday, the December 11th. Sounded like a delicious meal. And like she said, they hope to do another one in February or March. Thank you to Cindy and Ken Cole, Janet Kane, Francine Tishman, Andrea Sullivan, Joan Lenahan, and Nancy Mathers and her team from the Nutritional Program at Highland Valley for putting that on. Some of usual business update on the Directors, Volunteers, Admin Assistant, Treasury Reports, and Friends. They discussed the CARES Act funds for the Council on Aging. That had been, not yet been approved, but they discussed what was requested. We talked about the newsletter, they're doing outreach. They have compiled a list of people 85-plus age-wise that they'll be providing outreach to. They also put together a subcommittee that looked at board membership and recruitment. So they reported out on their strategies or recommendations, and then they're also looking to do more programming, educational program on outreach, things like Lifeline or the PERS, Personal Emergency Response Systems for seniors, providing some more education around topics like that. Open Space Review also met last week. Barry Searle came in. This was really interesting. He discussed the town-owned land that is currently beneath Alder Pond. It was a lot of fascinating history. His like great-great-grandfather or whatever, they had owned land, and then they ended up damming to make the pond. It used to be called Muck Road, and actually townspeople used to come and take some of the muck on their horse and buggy and actually spread it in their gardens. So that was pretty interesting history. There was additional continuing review of various lands and maps and looking at where there are chapter or wildlife corridors or water protection issues. They have a couple of projects going on. They have a poster for the committee that was drafted by Janet Brown. It's beautiful. It's actually a little bit of an informational flyer about the Open Space Review Committee. And then Charlie McDonald put together, is in the process of putting together possibly a CPC project that can provide education to the community on the Barnes Aquifer, having a map of exactly where it is and some educational information about, you know, how to preserve and protect that particular land. They're also discussed proposed committee goals for 2021, and they would like in January to come in and present to the Select Board, so we'll coordinate that for some time in January. And the Board of Health hasn't met since the last time we met. So that's it? Any questions? Nope? Would you like to talk about the AdHoc Technology Committee? And should that be a separate item, or do you want to report off on that as part of one of your committees? Chris?
They have, I think they may have had one meeting so far, but I know they're meeting again on Thursday. The Tech Committee is meeting on Thursday, as John said.
I meant the Grant Committee, sorry.
Oh, the Grant Committee, I'm sorry. Okay, yep. Let's see, yes. We spent a little bit of time, I think I had mentioned last week, that we were looking at a possibility of a grant application related to the Greenway. That was a quick turnaround. We were going to try and put in some requests to get funds to acquire a part of the right-of-way for the railroad. And so working together with Paul Fergal, who's the head of the Greenway Committee, Kate Swistec, Diana Federman, myself, and Ed, we pulled together some language and managed to make a decent justification, I believe. And so Ed and I spent about an hour or so last week to actually fill in the details of the grant application and put in an application for $100,000, which is about a fourth of the amount needed to try to get some funds to start acquiring the right-of-way. So it's been submitted. It's a quick turnaround, but I think we did really well on that, and hopefully we'll see some positive results. We've got, obviously, other grants to go to supplement that, but it's a first step anyway. And I guess I would just encourage, you know, if y'all saw some of those priorities, as I mentioned, that came out of the survey, so solar being one, you know, the public safety complex is out there. I don't know if the public safety complex is still meeting or not, or if they're in hiatus, but it might be worthwhile. All these four, or five, or six things that came up as kind of town priority issues, it might be good to kind of revitalize those in the New Year if they aren't active right now. The last thing I think that came up was a grant related to firefighter safety, and this is one that John Workman has applied for before, and he's taking the lead in doing that. I believe it's a maximum of $12,500 for some basic firefighter safety issue-related things, and so he's applied for it before and knows how to do it, so he's going to take care of that one, and that's due very soon as well. I think that's about it for right now.
Any questions for Chris?
Nope. I'll let, I'll let Ed report out on the CARES scenario when we get to that part, so.
I just wanted to mention in follow-up to what you just said, that I was in a committee meeting on Saturday with Lindsay Sabodosa, and she said that she's sort of made it her mission to help Southampton with the bike trail. So I think that since it came up as number one on the Master Plan Committee, you know, I think continuing to move in any direction with that would be really helpful. Any other questions about the Grants Committee? Ed, would you like to give your report?
Sure. Relatively short, since most of my stuff is in the agenda, but just to let you know, the new highway department truck, the F-550, or as John would say, the F-150. Because we're so used to a 150 versus a 550, slip of the tongue, that's all. Which was approved at the annual town meeting and by ballot at the September 1 annual town election, has been ordered through MHQ vehicles under the Plymouth County Cooperative Municipal Bid. So that's now in the works. The bid opening for the relocation of the Water Main onto the Route 10 Bridge over the Manhan River is scheduled for tomorrow at 2 p.m. And the electronic sign messaging boards, which were ordered with CARES Act funding by the emergency manager's request in Phase 1 of the CARES Act applications, they are due to be delivered here this Thursday, December 17, over to the police station. And then VHB has reported that DEP has completed the administrative portion of the review of our waterways permit application for the East Street Bridge, and will now be working on the technical portion of the review of our application. And then the next select board meeting will be December 29, and January scheduled meetings are the 12th and the 26th.
Any questions for Ed? Thank you. It's good to see, like, some of these things moving, like the bridge, the bridges, the Water Main, and also the review of the East Street Bridge.
Yes.
All right. If there are no questions about that, then we can go ahead and move into old business. First is the Town Accountant Position Update.
Renee, do you mind if we do the interim first?
Not at all.
Okay. So Ed and I have good news is that So Ed and I have good news is that we're going to hire a person to fill the interim Town Accountant position that will start next Tuesday. We did some soliciting of temporary service firms. They came up with some candidates for us. Ed and I did several interviews on Zoom, selected the best candidate, and we worked out the details and the rate with the service. And Ed's putting the paperwork together to put it through the PQB on Thursday. So she should be starting next Tuesday. Three days, three days a week, 24 hours a week, because we had to back the rate into what we had in the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, that's awesome.
I have sent that along to the PPPB, who meets Thursday evening. And then later, maybe under any other necessary business, if the Select Board would be kind enough to also take up that PCF for Regina Gillis as a conditional vote approval, conditional upon PPPB approving it on Thursday evening. And that would allow us to have Regina start next week on Tuesday.
Yeah, if we don't do that, we've got to wait till our next meeting, which is another couple of weeks away, and we really don't want to do that.
So this person works for a temp agency, so it is clearly going to be an interim?
Not necessarily. She may have interest in the permanent job also, but this will give us a good opportunity to view her and vice versa.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you for arranging and being part of those interviews.
No problem.
Any questions for Ed or John? Would someone like to make a motion then?
I would say there's not a motion until we get down to the PCF.
Okay, the PCF, okay. Any questions then for Ed or John about a candidate or the position or anything?
I'm just assuming this person may not have municipal background?
Yeah, no municipal background. I've got a resume here. But she's been accounting manager at a couple of different places, financial manager, grant accountant. She worked at the University of Massachusetts twice as a grant accountant and also as a financial analyst. So she's got some good financial background. So, you know, Ed's going to have to show her the municipal part. But from the day-to-day, you know, AP, payroll, all that stuff, she should be able to go right in with some help from Ed.
So it'll be three days a week?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, right now.
Okay.
Total of 24 hours a week.
Great.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah. Hopefully, as soon as Tuesday.
Yeah.
And while John just mentioned that, I can do it in any other business also. But if she is able to start on next Tuesday, which would be the 22nd, you may want to later on extend my appointment as the interim Town Accountant through the 22nd.
Okey-dokey. If there's no other updates on that, then we can go back. Anything on the Town Accountant Position, the regular position?
Yep. You want to handle that one, Ed? Because you did indeed.
Yeah. We haven't posted it on Indeed. We have had, I think, probably seven applicants come back for that that met our minimum criteria. Three of those candidates actually scored highly proficient on some of the assessment, accounting assessment items that we had asked them to perform on the candidates. John and I have interviewed a couple of those individuals. I think we've got, there are some possibilities, you know, there that may work out for us. But I think both John and I are somewhat of a mindset that if we are able to start the interim Town Accountant next week, that that might buy us some time to expand that pool of candidates.
Yeah, because to us, it's very important to get the best candidate we can for the permanent position.
And did those candidates, any of those candidates have municipal background? None.
That's why we're kind of, you know, we'd like to bide our time a little bit and see what we can do there. I also talked to the temp agencies on if they have people that are interested in a permanent position also. We'd have to work out a fee structure, so it's not as attractive. But if they give us an ideal candidate, then, you know, we can talk about it.
You have to buy out the contract or something?
Well, when you go through a temp agency, you have to pay a finder's fee if they give somebody directly. But again, if we get an ideal candidate, we'll bring it back to the board and we can talk about it.
Okay. The interim is 12 weeks, right?
Yeah, the temporary Town Accountant would be for up to a 12-week period. That's correct.
You can renew if you really need to.
Correct.
And the person that we had talked about at one point as a possible interim subbing in from another town is no longer interested? Or maybe wants to wait until the permanent position comes up? Or?
That you had, you talked, or, yeah, I know what you mean. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, my own personal take on that was that, you know, that they might be interested. Did have some short-term municipal experience. How that was actually going to work out for us as far as, you know, would that person be here or have the ability to be here during the day? Or would it just be nights and weekends? You know, so John and I thought it was actually a better option to move forward with the individual from the staffing agency at this point.
Yeah, that person had a full-time job, four days a week, plus she was working the fifth day a week in another town. So the hours that she could dedicate to us weren't good. But she still may be a good candidate for the permanent.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, how about if we just bring up the Assistant Accountant Position before we talk about the close?
Oh, sure. The Assistant Accounting, Accountant Position, I have sent along a PRF to post that position also to the PPP. It will be on their Thursday evening agenda. The Finance Committee voted on that conditionally last night, again, conditional upon PPPB approval being, coming along on Thursday evening, so we can move that along for posting. There's another one that I also sent to PPPB is our Town Custodian is going to be, have to be out on leave for a short period of time, could be anywhere from two to six weeks. So I have also asked to, for approval, to post that position as a temporary to fill in for two to six weeks. And as you are aware, that Town Custodian works here in the Town Hall, also at the library, and also at the police station. see if the capacity.
I think you cut out the end. Can you just repeat what you just said at the end, Ed?
Yes.
You said that he works, or right now, he works over at the three buildings. And then you, I didn't hear what you said at the end. You froze.
Okay, okay. Yeah, John has also, is also reaching out to the staffing agencies also to see if they might have anybody to fill in in that capacity, too.
Okay. And that's a total of how many hours a week?
The three, three different places add up to a total of 19 hours per week.
Okay. Now, right now, we have a school that's closed through January. I don't know when this is going to start. Is, do we have other employees in town that are able to shift to that position or no?
Good point.
Well, you know, they wouldn't work under us. They would work under the school department. And, you know, even if they're closed, they may be doing maintenance or whatever in that period of time. Yeah.
Any questions about the Assistant Accountant Position? Okay.
And we've, okay, so we're going to post that. We have, obviously, would any of the people that you saw, the resumes you've gotten in for the regular, would they, any of them, their profile fit for the Assistant Position?
Probably not. I mean, there was a second choice for the interim, but he happened to live an hour and a half away. And he was, you know, he said he would travel, but that's a long travel, especially in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the Assistant Position is less money than the Town Accountant Position, so.
And fewer hours, too.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have some progress. That's a good.
Yeah, I think that's great.
That's good to hear, yes.
How about the FY '20 Close?
Yeah, after Vicki completed the tax recap for us, so we're able to finalize our tax rate for fiscal year '21. When she finished that project, she did start on the fiscal year '20 Close. She was in last weekend, so that process has started. She anticipates, she's estimated that that might be between 20 and 30 hours. And I think, just for your own information, I think she had originally estimated the tax recap portion to be between 10 and 15 hours. And I think she actually spent eight and a half hours on that.
Okay. Is there a deadline or an anticipated date that that'll be done?
I can reach out to her and find out. I mean, it would be nice to have it done, you know, at the beginning of January at least, which would give us some time for when the auditors come in later in February.
Right. And really, I think we should, we should set some kind of a deadline, you know, a target date to be completed. It's in our interest to do that.
Yep. I agree. Any other questions about that? Okay, shifting topic a little bit, the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update. We got an email from Ed about that. Ken from PVPC has submitted to the state and also made an, updated it. It's up on the website, right?
It is up on the website. I'm going to make a few adjustments to the, shall we say, the title or the information that leads to the link for people to view it, just so that they have the ability, if they want to comment on it, that they have a way to do that.
And there is kind of a required timing for the public to read it and comment if they want to. So anybody who's listening that would like to do that, they should, you know, read it. It's quite a long document, but it's worthwhile looking at it.
Yeah. And Ken suggested that the comment period go through the end of December.
Is that in lieu of a public hearing?
We actually already had, you know, one public hearing during the process, so this is an additional step.
Yeah, I thought there had to be another public hearing when it was sort of all done. And then we have to get letters of support from Planning and a few other committees, right?
Yep. Planning, Conservation, I'll be at the Conservation Meeting Monday night. Select Board is another one. So probably your next meeting, I will do a short presentation on that and ask for a letter. Ken has asked for a letter of support from PVPC on it. But I did also send a copy of it out to all members of the Open Space Recreation Plan Update Committee today. So they've got it to look at it. And I also sent it to Marla Hank, who's Chair of the Conservation Commission, Paul Demon, who's Chair of the Planning Board. And let's see, I sent it to
Did you send it to Parks?
Yes, I sent it to the Parks, sent it to Mark Reed, and also sent it to Paul Fergal from the Greenway.
So the state is approving it? And then the letters of support and any public comments from the website, those, is that it?
That's it, as far as I know. Ken did say that, you know, from what he's hearing, it can take up to three months to have it actually approved at the state level. But as he alluded to before, 99 and 9/10% of the time, if a grant were to come up that requires that, that as long as they are aware that we've done the process, we've submitted the plan to the state, and we're awaiting their approval, that they will accept that.
Any questions about that? Okay, the next is Disability Short and Long-Term Update. Any updates?
I'm waiting for Ed to send me the name of the vendor so I can contact the vendor directly. Because Ed is not able to get it in his schedule, so I volunteered to take that over and contact him directly.
Yeah, and I had asked Jennifer Day to update the spreadsheet we had, because the one that we had and had posted on the website last time didn't have the salaries on it. And I know it's one of the things that the companies will require from us. So now it does. So we have a full package for whether it's John or myself that basically farm this out and work with the, any interested companies on it.
I mean, send it to me, and I'll take the time to contact them, and that'd be less of an issue for you to do on your schedule. I'll also contact the company that initially had questions, but we weren't able to supply them with all the information. So I'll be glad to contact both of them, but send me the information as soon as you can.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Next is the East Hampton Media Peg Equipment. I just put it on there because I know that the town approved spending for the supplies, and I didn't know if there was anything happening with that.
Yes, actually Jen had talked to me about it, and I told her the best way that I'd like to see it happen as far as the transfer of the money goes, since they'll be doing the procurement for us, is I asked her to send us an invoice for the estimated amount. And she did that. And with the warrant that I finished processing today, that $50,000 is on that warrant. So that will go out at the end of this week. And then they'll be able to move, keep that moving forward. Now, I will bring up one piece, because Jen has asked me about this along the way. And I've basically kind of poo-pooed the thought, the idea, just because of the lack of space we have in this Town Hall, especially for storage. But she had reached out and asked if there was a possibility, rather than setting up their little desk with the equipment right in the first-floor meeting room, like it currently is, that the room downstairs, which is next to the boiler room, that is chock-full of senior center items, but uh, like wheelchairs, uh, porta potties, things like that. Uh, it's got some emergency management stuff like blankets in it. It's got the uh, the old uh, desktop PCs from five years ago that um, I need to list out and uh, auction off and clear out, and a few other things. But that that room is labeled and actually was designed designed, if you look at the uh, uh, plans for the remodel of this building as a television studio. Uh, so you know, she, so she has asked if there was any possibilities that, a possibility that they could utilize that space for that and do training and stuff out of there, uh, you know, versus having it upstairs. To the, to this point in time, I've pretty much said, uh, no, we we need the space. I don't know how to make it work, cuz there's only one door in there as far as being secure or whatever. But uh, I I would like to make you aware of that. And if, you know, you think differently and um, you know, it it maybe should be utilized for that purpose, just let me know, and I'll let Jen know.
Anybody have any comments about that?
Would they have to extend all the wires from the main conference room closet all the way down into that area if they took it over? That's where everything comes in, right? In the conference room closet?
Right. I mean, right, right now, they go, they do go back to, you know, the server room, which is, let's see, two bathrooms and one janitor closet awa- away from that. I don't know, you know, how how di- you know, how mu- difficult it would be to, you know, move or extend the wires from that room to uh, you know, the studio. Uh, I'm not sure.
I do know that the durable medical equipment um, loan situation is pretty popular, and I can't imagine the senior center would have any additional room anywhere to uh, put those things. Um, so.
Is that room big enough where we can partition it off into two and put a separate door?
That's where the.
You wouldn't be able to put a separate do- door in it. I mean, you might be able to partition some of, some of it off and like put a steel, you know, gridwork and a steel door in this, you know, separate it off. The question becomes at that point in time, uh, which and whose equipment is on which side of that steel door? You know, or or grated door, shall I say?
Yeah.
Well, we'll just have to keep that um, in mind. You know, if we get a windfall and we get a brand new senior center, we could.
Yes.
Clear out the things down there and make room for a studio, but it seems kind of challenging right now.
Well, you know, I I will say, and it's not just the COA stuff. Like I say, there's emergency blankets down uh, there. There's a couple of pop-up tents. There's some other stuff. I I will say this, there is probably anywhere from five to ten times as much of that, shall we say, health equipment in there that anyone would need to borrow at any one time, even under conditions as strange as this.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I know that uh, in home health and hospice, when I have somebody that they don't take back like personal care items like a seat, shower chairs and benches and commodes and things like that, uh, we're often telling people to donate them to local senior center. But Stavros, there are other places that do take um, durable medical equipment. So when I br- when I meet next time with the Council on Aging, maybe I can discuss, discuss the possibility of making it available if it's in fact not being used.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of it down there, that's for sure.
Yeah, okay. Um, anything else? Okay, so I guess we can move into new business, COVID nineteen update. We had a phone call this Monday uh, with uh, Chiefs, Police, Fire, um, Health Director, uh, new EMD, Ed and myself, uh, got the update from all the different departments, got the update from the schools that uh, Matt had told us about. Um, yeah, I think it's the same thing. There's a little bit of like weariness going on in the world and 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 in people that are doing frontline. It's really challenging. It's incredibly fatiguing, especially this time of year. So I think everybody's kind of feeling the same thing. But everybody is um, I think there's a couple of quarantines going on, which is challenging staffing-wise, but adequate PPE and um, Ed, I mean, Don Snyder's already made connections with Mima and uh, our police chief took him around to the EOC and check out the supply of PPE. And he's made connections to all the various um, people that he needs to. Uh, what else, Ed?
We we know, you know, we we know the numbers are going up for positives. Uh, you know, Southampton went from, I always mess up before we were in the green or the gray. We were in the second of the four categories. We jumped up to the red, uh, which is the fourth of the categories. Uh, you know, so, I mean, basically, under the old rules, which got changed probably a cou- couple weeks ago, um, three, three weeks in a row in that red area, and our local businesses would have to step back to phase one of uh, or step one of phase three. Um, but we're already mandated mandated there anyway. Uh, you know, however, you know, we are seeing playing, playing out what, you know, e- everyone has forecasted and uh, that, yep, uh, as we moved indoors and got into the cooler weather, um, that the numbers would go up again and spike. And um, everyone was afraid that uh, a a lot of people would not garner the recommendations for Thanksgiving, you know, whether it's traveling or large gatherings. And, you know, as we saw from the numbers there, uh, a lot of people did, and that, I think, is feeding uh, you know, those numbers. So, I mean, yes, we're all getting tired of it, but you know, the best best thing people can do is, you know, wear your facial covering, you know, wa- wash your hands, disinfect those common services, um, you know, keep your six-foot social distancing, um, and all that. And that, a- and I know it's gonna be a pain to keep doing this for, you know, another, you know, three, four, five months, but it's the, it's the best thing we can do to uh, keep the numbers as controlled as possible, because it's gonna be those frontline health workers and the hospitals that end up getting overwhelmed with this. Um, and and while we talk about, you know, those things, I I don't know if all of you are aware of the two-tiered system uh, that is in place now that basically puts communities into those three or four categories of gray, green, yellow, and then red. Uh, but it is a two-tiered system now. Uh, communities that have over ten thousand people, basically, they look at the numbers of your positive uh, positive test in the previous two weeks. And if you go over five percent, you you get moved to the red category. And, you know, there are other qualifications to that for the other categories also. Uh, we're a community of under ten thousand, so basically, they they look, it's not a per- not the percentage, even though we were at five point five two percent um, of the people being tested that are testing positive, which, you know, if we were over ten thousand, would have sent us there. It's uh, the actual number of positive tests over the previous two weeks. Um, my memory is that I think it's from the green to the yellow. Uh, the benchmark is fifteen. You hit fifteen, you move into the yellow. Uh, that, my memory is that the week before, I think we were at like thirteen. So we were just a little bit below that. Uh, the next step up that actually sends community, communities with under uh, population of ten thousand into the red is the benchmark of twenty-five. And we we had twenty-nine positive tests in the previous two weeks. So that's what's sent Southampton into the uh, you know, the uh, the red category. And 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 a good number of, you know, our our positives are are again, you know, driven by clusters, whether it's uh, you know, large, large get-togethers of one form or another, or even uh, you know, family clusters, um, you know, within a household. It's not necessarily one person now coming down with COVID nineteen. It could be three and four in that same household.
Are there any specific recommendations that the Board of Health is making at this point in time, or are we just going with what the state and the CDC tells us?
I mean, the Board of Health is pretty much along the same lines as the CDC. Uh, you know, i- it's, it's basically uh, be wise, be smart, wear your facial covering, uh, wash your hands, stay away from the large gatherings. Uh, you know, I have, and a- and again, one of the biggest, you know, biggest age groups of the driving force is eighteen to twenty-nine-year-olds, you know, also. So um, like I say, I I think a lot of people are getting, you know, tired of being cautious and whatever, unfortunately. And it's, you know, leading to what I would say are probably not wise actions. A- and that's helping to drive those numbers up.
Yeah, so don't join any large gatherings, especially indoors. If someone in your household is sick with symptoms of COVID, uh, it's safe for people to not, you know, go into big gatherings and um, do all the other things that were recommended from the get-go until we're out of the woods here, and we're not. And there's gonna be another problem after Christmas if people don't follow the rules. So please, for the sake of a lot of people, we had another person from Southampton. I just got a message today that died. That was in a facility. Um, please, uh, you know, you have to just hang in there for another, like Ed said, three, four months, um, and follow the rules. Someone's in your household is not well, it's not safe for you to necessarily um, join up in a big gathering. I mean, that's what drove this last one. So it was indoor gathering. That was larger than the recommendations from the state. So anyway, that's um, that's kind of the update. As you know, the vaccine is coming. Um, where I work, they're getting it tomorrow. I know it's been um, arriving in Western Massachusetts, and I'm hoping that uh, that turns things around a bit, but it won't for the next several months.
Yeah, and and Jerry and I and Donald work on something that's fairly simple uh, and pu- and add it to the website to get, get a message out there.
I asked Jerry about the messaging uh, on Monday, and um, because we certainly don't want every single town feeling like they have to like recreate the wheel that DPH, we have CDC, you know, that the messaging should be clear. And um, so I believe she was gonna check to see what DPH was putting out most recently.
Correct.
I mean, but really, these messages have been going out for a long time. I just don't understand why people just don't get it and, you know, abide by them.
Compliance isn't there. I mean, there's just not teeth behind any of the recommendations. It's not, you know, you know, the the uh, the event that was a bit of a uh, spreader wasn't even in our town. So um, you know, it makes it very difficult when you don't have oversight of, you know, places that aren't in our town. So it's tough. It's still very deadly. More people are dying each day than have in the past. So it's just, it's not over. People really have to be, you know, careful. Well, let's talk about the CARES Act. We did finally find out Thursday about funding for phase two.
Yes, we did. And then actually, we got, I did get an update over the weekend that added a couple of more items that were in the gray area uh, to that. So. Got more paperwork here on the CARES Act than I do on anything else. So I'll, you know, I'll, I'll start on the probably shorter list and just let you know of some of the uh, the items that did straight up end up being denied um, in our phase-two application. And um, you know, for the library, they had requested some laptops for patrons to be utilized outside. Those, those were declined. Uh, there was a printer for patrons to be used, utilized outside. That, that was declined. Uh, for the fire department, um, you know, they had requested a number of defibrillators, a stair chair, uh, cardiac monitor cords, a CPAP machine, uh, a power stretcher, and a power uh, portable suction machine. And tho- those were all uh, denied. Um, the COA, um, they had actually requested gr- grandpads, which are somewhat, from my understanding, like an iPad uh, for loan out to seniors, and those had been denied. Um, the highway department, they had asked for an electric water heater for employee hand washing uh, for sanitation purposes, because um, the hot water that they have is driven off their boiler. So it does take a long time to uh, get to where it's going and uh, also to heat up. And that was declined. And then the Board of Health had actually, um, you know, as you were previously aware of, had requested a a vaccine refrigerator. Um, that was uh, denied um, mainly because of the fact that uh, they didn't think that Board of Health would actually be getting any vaccine, um, you know, before the December thirtieth uh, deadline that would actually need to be stored. Um, they'd also requested a printer and some toner cartridges, uh, which were denied. And then on the flip side of that, and I'm sure I won't hit all of them, uh, but um, you know, just to let you know that um, the Nora School had put in for about forty-nine thousand dollars uh, in remote learning equipment, which they had actually already expended uh, just to get the school, school back open up. And uh, before um, that was approved, uh, they had requested a- a- an amount for, um, and I think actually, the original request was like a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars or whatever, for further remote learning to go remote from each classroom. Um, that we had, just to fit in the numbers, had reduced to a hundred and six thousand. That was approved, but that one's gonna be a challenge uh, to see if we can get it here now by December thirtieth. I've reached out to John Lum- Lumbraya. He has thanked me for the great news and uh, said he'll get back to me uh, with their plan. So I'm happy to work with them. They had also requested, uh, well, they had requested twenty thousand dollars in PPE. Um, we had reduced that to fifteen thousand dollars to stay within our allocation, uh, and that was also approved. Uh, but um, you know, just some of the other things that had been approved that um, the department heads are trying to figure out how to go about procuring it and getting it here for the thirtieth and have it invoiced is uh, in the COA, um, a reception desk, the grab-and-go meals, uh, technology training, uh, newsletter prep and mailing with, but they can only be used for any incremental cost uh, associated with COVID nineteen that wasn't present before COVID nineteen. Two, two stand-up heaters, activity books for seniors, additional instructors and pro- for per- uh, and personnel outreach, uh, care bags, uh, shelf-ready food, and the retractable awning. Uh, let's say, the library uh, was repro- approved for uh, PPE, a vacuum with a HEPA filter, uh, HVAC adjustments for COVID. They had been uh, approved for an air balancer, but they found out that that would not work on their HVAC system. Uh, wages for an extra staff member, two stand-up heaters, uh, two, two Zoom accounts, an outdoor tent, uh, wages for extra cleaning, website costs directly associated with COVID nineteen, deep cleaning if needed, and they needed it, uh, and wages for staff. deep cleaning if needed, and they needed it, uh, and wages for staff coverage. Let's see, the health department had, uh, let's say, requested a docking station for a laptop that they have, signage, which, uh, was approved, uh, steel storage cabinet for PPE. PPE, uh, which was like $9,100, but they also had funds, uh, still available from round one. So, um, Chris thinks they had like a total of about $18,000, uh, available for PPE, uh, and some, uh, and some thermometers. Let's see, the police, um, had been approved for one tri-band portable radio, uh, Plexiglas dividers for their booking interrogation room, phone ports to be added to the EOC, a four, four-line phone for the EOC, uh, a disinfecting fogger unit, uh, police wages should they have to, uh, backfill, um, due to COVID-19, and also wages for dispatch for, uh, the same reason. Highway, uh, was approved for PPE masks, uh, a generator for a repeater, uh, for the repeater and fuel. There's no way that that can get here unfortunately before December 30th. Wages, again, if, uh, staff, uh, was quarantined or out and for backfilling due to COVID-19, and two UV HEPA, uh, purifiers, which Randall, I believe, has already ordered. For the fire department, they have been approved for two laptop toughbooks for the ambulances, um, some uniforms, an automated CPR machine, uh, eight portable VHF radios, wages again, uh, for, uh, having to backfill or staff due to COVID-19, uh, Curis hydrogen peroxide room disinfection, uh, machine and reusable gowns. And the, uh, the agricultural commission was approved for some money for, uh, cleaning disinfectant, uh, items like that, Plexiglas, um, the, uh, I want to call it the parish keyword, but I know that's not the right term here, but, yeah, community pantry was approved for some funding for, uh, for food. Let's see, the housing authority did get approved for $6,000 in, uh, rent or mortgage, help, but, you know, they're not going to be able to utilize that at this point in time, unfortunately. And then again, you know, we don't know what will happen in the latter part of January if, um, I, I, I still think there's better odds than not that, um, after there's a change in administration in Washington, that they will probably come back and revisit, um, some of these things and extend those dates.
Chris, you want to add anything to that?
Just, just one thing, I think, um, for the tri-band radio, um, that was a new one, I think actually toward the highway department on round two, but I believe police had already put in for like three or four that got approved in round one, right?
Uh, five.
Okay, the, those have been approved and, um, we're checking to see, but there were some tablets for the building inspector.
Yeah, I think they got, they're, they're buried in with, uh, uh, ones that we had ordered for the department heads. So Chris and I are going to put our heads together tomorrow and go back over our notes, uh, just to make sure, uh, that they were in that, uh, what one line item and, uh, see if we can move forward on those too.
Yeah, a lot of things, this application was really kind of screwy and a lot of things had to be grouped in a very strange way, so we have to parse it back out again. But I think we're, we're believing anyway that the, um, the laptops for all the department heads are approved, um, with the docking station, so that's going to be a procurement that will happen. So there's things like that that are going, and I think there was some stuff for, um, for the town clerk, um, a folding, a paper folding machine and a couple of other, uh, things that Lucy had asked for, I believe, that got approved as well. So we did pretty well. I mean, some of the big ticket items were in fire unfortunately, that whatever, they didn't seem to like what we put forward, but, um...
So, so the requirement is, it has to be in and paid for by December 30th, is that correct?
That's what they're saying.
I'm checking on the paid for part because it was part of a webinar on, the days all blend together. I can't remember, I think it was yesterday, but it could have been last Friday, uh, where, uh, someone from DLS was alluding to, um, the fact that there might be a payment option in January for some of those things that came in late December. So I, I have reached out and asked that question. Because that, that's actually, in some cases, a bigger challenge than finding some of this stuff, getting it here by the 30th and having it invoiced. Just because of the fact we pay bills every two weeks.
Right. We talked Monday about possibly having a, an interim week so that these things can get paid.
Yeah, and like I say, I'm, I'm waiting, from what I heard in that webinar, I think there's the possibility that, okay, as long as you've got it and it's been invoiced by the 30th, that we may be able to pay for it in, in January, but, uh, I'll wait to hear back on that and I'll let you all know.
So with the money that we didn't spend because it wasn't approved, is this become in a hopefully future pot for future funding? You know, how we roll?
I, I asked that question too, and, uh, well, let, let you know when I get a response on it.
Okay. Any questions? No, it's good news, it just has to be spent, I mean, the logistics are challenging.
Yes.
Well, yeah, it is, and a lot, and a lot of this stuff is in such high demand that, uh, I was talking with Ian today on some of, um, his new procurements, and, I mean, we just got word, I think it was today, that the two signboards that were ordered from,
Round one.
Phase one.
Phase one are actually going to get delivered on Thursday. We were a little worried about those, and there's some other items that Ian had, uh, ordered, uh, from that phase one piece that he's chasing down with his vendors now to find out, okay, are these going to get here or not?
So, so there's, there's no give, the fact that you're, the application for phase two was due in the end of October, and it took them from the end of October to the middle of December to advise us what items they've approved. What a system.
Yeah.
Can't help it.
It's unbelievable.
Going to be extended.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I mean, you know, they didn't ask for like a narrative justification or anything with the application, so, you know, if, if that were there, I don't know if that would have helped if, you know, if we were able to put in a couple of sentences about why we wanted these things, I don't know, because it led to, you know, just questions over time that they would come back to us, but still, you know, not giving us a green light on anything that they didn't have a problem with. And just holding, just holding up the other things that were questionable, that would have been a far better process to be able to be used, but that's not what they did. Unfortunately, it was the most inefficient way to, to look at this, but, you know, we could have had the green light on some of this stuff probably a month ago.
Yeah.
It's not questionable.
And, and hindsight's always 2020. I, I even asked myself of, you know, going through this last piece, which actually was much longer than the phase one with the questions and whatever. Okay, I almost asked myself of, okay, you're questioning why, why, you know, why that is related to COVID or 19? You know what? Scratch that right off our list right now. Yeah, just, just because of the fact that it delays the other stuff, but.
Yeah. So, anyway, we'll do the best we can.
Thank you, Abel. But thank you, Ed and Chris, for all your work on those. The next agenda item is town hall closing early on the 24th of December and the 31st of December. What did we vote last year? Was it one o'clock, two o'clock?
I think it was two. I'm, I'm, I'm going to actually make a recommendation. Staff has worked very hard, uh, this year. I will be, I, I, I will tell you firsthand that, uh, working during COVID and even the fact that, you know, we're, we're not open to the public, uh, it's probably more stressful than doing business the normal way. So I, I, I would probably turn, turn around and ask the select board respectfully if you would consider, um, either closing at noon at the earliest or 1:00 PM at the latest on New Year's, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve for the staff. I, I think it would very go a, a long way to show your appreciation for their hard work.
I, I would agree. I'll make a, I'll make a motion, we allow them to close at noontime, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
I will second that, but, but I would, yeah, I'll second that for discussion.
Okay.
So then, so then I would just, I would just appreciate in the motion, John, if you mind amending it, that, you know, this is a non-normal year and this doesn't set precedent for future years once we get back to more normal times.
I, I think that's understood, but if you want me to put that in the motion formally, I'll be glad to add that.
You're going to second that, Matt? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Tishman eye.
Roll and eye.
Martin eye.
Falls eye.
Road nine.
Thank you very much, and we'll all appreciate it.
Give them our thanks.
Absolutely.
Yes, I will.
The next item is the fire chief request for approval of policy for compensation of employees with holidays. We got a document today, I think, about that, um, or actually in the packet rather. And the agenda, it says Thanksgiving and Christmas, but it was a little bit more detailed than that in the materials we got.
Yes, and I think, yeah, and what he had sent along, uh, seems to be that to this point in time, uh, it has been for those working on the paid time and a half to those people that have worked on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and/or night, Thanksgiving Day and/or night, and New Year's Eve, uh, night. And that's been the practice to this point. I suggested to John, uh, that, uh, that at this point in time, uh, would be what he should put forward to the board and ask for approval, but, um, you know, he, he is also looking forward, so, you know, separate these two pieces out or combine them however you want. You know, he is also trying to make the case for the consideration, uh, of, you know, expanding that to the other holidays that either, um, you know, DPW or police, uh, that have in their union contracts for, uh, additional pay when they, uh, work the, uh, the 11 holidays to, um, include in the future for fire and EMS.
Okay. Who'd like to talk?
Go ahead.
Can, can, is this something that has to go to the PQB?
I certainly, I would recommend.
No, it, it does not, and, and I'll be...
You check with the attorney and we have the ability to decide this, but we also, I think the select board has the ability to also send it to PQB, um, don't you think?
Well, that's my question. And then the other question I have about this...
We always seem to make the wrong call on this, and then we Monday morning quarterback it.
I can tell you that, given this thought, and this came about, just to fill in the blanks a little bit, this came about because of the practice that wasn't exactly in sync between the fire department and the hours and the accounting office. So first of all, grateful to any firefighter, EMT who's able and willing to work the holiday, especially this year. We just want to make it, uh, truer, the, uh, syncing between the fire department hours and the accounting office. So that's one thing. And the other issue that came up subsequent to that was, uh, could there be parity between highway, police, for example, and fire? My personal opinion is that, um, I do want PQB to look at this because I don't know if it's apples and apples. You know, the highway department, the police department are union employees, and having a benefited position comes with benefits. So, um, I think it becomes a little bit, um, less clear when it comes to the other holidays, not necessarily the major ones. And it's always already part of their policy and part of their budget for Christmas and New Year's, so I, I would say I'm comfortable with approving the Christmas and New Years and then have the PQB look at the other, which wouldn't come into play until, what, later on in February, right? Unless Martin Luther King is considered one of the holidays.
I'd have to go back and look at the list, but I, I'm going to, I'm going to say this. The statute is specific. A strong thief
Yep.
shall set the compensation rate for full and part-time employees with the approval of the select board. Does not say anything else.
Per diem on-call employees?
It says all full-time and part-time, so that basically means anyone.
Yeah, and so with that, with, if he's reading that, if he's, if he's reading that in my time on the PQB, I, I'm, now I'm leaning towards what Ed's saying, because I, I recall having these arguments with Art all the time.
Also, it went to the attorneys and asked, and it was subject to select board approval, correct?
That's, that's what the statute says.
Right, right.
Yeah, subject to select board approval. And, yeah, I mean, and, and John, on, on the flip side of that, you know, John has said that, you know, he has worked with the PPB, uh, you know, over the years on the compensation and, and whatever. I still, I still think there are two separate issues. You know, one is what has been done in the past, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, you know, I've worked in a large community, in a small community, and the small community that I was at before I came here, um, their fire and their ambulance system, uh, systems and services were separate, but they found the same thing there, uh, that our fire chief is finding here is, and at least some of those holidays, uh, you know, especially the big ones, whether it be, you know, Christmas, Thanksgiving, uh, you know, New Years or whatever, that, you know, have family traditions or whatever, or, or family gatherings, uh, people really would rather not work, they'd rather be with their family unless you give them some incentive. You know, so at least for those three where there's a past practice, uh, I would encourage the select board at least to, uh, you know, approve the time and a half compensation for, for those. And then, you know, like I say, if you want to look at the other ones or e- even ask, you know, the PPPB, you know, what their opinion is on it, is it comparable or whatever, you know, go ahead.
I mean, they're town, they're town employees and we have a PQB department, uh, they have the bigger picture of different other departments. To me, it just seems like, I mean, I'm comfortable with the, uh, the upcoming holidays. It's, like I said, it's already part of their budget, it's already a, a policy that they have. I think just making it, uh, the hours sync with the accounting department makes perfect sense, but I don't have a, I, I think that, why do we have a PQB if we don't have them look at things like this?
And so all we're really talking about is two people for each of these days or night shifts, is that correct? Two additional people per shift.
And where is the money? I think it was a two grand?
Right. Right.
So, um, I, you know, I mean, I just think that I'd rather have the backing of the, or at least a little bit of thought from the, uh, personnel committee.
Pardon me. I mean, I, I don't want to hold it up though.
No, no, I would, I would still recommend for the one... No, I would, I would still recommend for the one, the ones that have been done in the past, the Christmas Eve, the Christmas Day and/or night, the Thanksgiving Day and/or night, and the New Year's Eve night, that the select board actually approve, anyone that actually works those shifts be paid at time and a half. Because otherwise, you may not have any service on those days.
I, I think that's what Rini said, is she's comfortable doing that and looking, asking the PQB to look at the other eight holidays, correct, Rini?
One involves budget differences, and the other one, it's not going to hold it up because the next holiday, depending whether it counts Martin Luther King Day versus President's Day, they'll have time to do it, we'll get time to get back to us, it's not going to hold up the show.
Yeah. Just, just a point of clarity, this would be New Year's Eve, but not New Year's Day?
That's what it says.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm in favor of those three, three holidays, timeframes at least, without any problem, but sure, I don't mind going and getting another opinion as to what, what other holidays, and maybe it's not all eight of them, maybe it's another two or three out of the bunch. I mean, who knows? That would be appropriate, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and what he said is currently accounted for in the budget is Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and/or night, Thanksgiving Day and/or night, and New Year's Eve night.
Okay.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion then?
I'll move to pay time and a half for Christmas Day and Christmas Night, Thanksgiving Day and/or night, and New Year's Eve night.
Is there a second?
Okay. And that's for anyone that actually works, right?
Yes, for the, for the two people who would be on, on those shifts, yes.
Someone second it?
I'll second. Yeah, so a question, what if we have to call more in because there was something going on, those folks would be paid also?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, any other comments? I think it was Francine, and then I think Matt had seconded.
Matt seconded?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? So this is just for the major holidays, which is already their policy and also in the budget. All in favor?
Tishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Roland, aye.
Martin, aye.
Groden, aye.
Someone want to make?
Do we need a motion to send this to the PQB to look at the other holidays, or?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we send the other holidays to the PQB for their review and recommendations.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, John and then Chris, any other discussion? I know we're talking about two separate contracts between highway and police, but there are other town municipal employees, whether it be library, whatever, I just think if somebody had a bigger picture of where it stood, I mean, highway obviously, and police are more similar because of the 24/7 nature, but I think it's worth looking at it from a broader perspective. All in favor?
Yeah, Tishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Roland, aye.
Martin, aye.
Groden, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a conservation commission fine of $300 a day for, I think, violation of the bylaw. Chris, do you want to speak to that, or does Ed want to?
Uh, just a little bit. You know that we passed the wetlands bylaw at the last special town meeting, and that's currently at the AG's office. Hopefully we'll get approved in the next couple of months, it usually takes them a while to do that. Along with that, there is an enforcement provision, and that's something also that under the Mass Conservation Commission, it provides for fines for any kind of violation of the wetlands bylaw. And what's been proposed by Concom, I believe, is $300 a day as a fine, and that is based upon some research that they have done, looking at, I believe, 16 different towns, of which 11 of them have this $300 a day fine, so 11 out of, 11 out of 16 do, and those towns include Amherst, Palmer, North Hampton, Belcher Town, Southwick, Chicopee, for example. So that's what they're asking us to do, and to try and do it the most expeditious way. And that's more, Ed has got some ideas how to proceed probably more efficiently than necessarily putting it in a bylaw or something like that.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, this is a fine, it isn't a fee. Legal opinion is that, you know, under, under the current system, what the Conservation Commission was actually originally hoping for is, was, sends it to the select board, the select board approves it, and it becomes part of that bylaw where their fees are. But this is a fine, not a fee. So basically, Michelle wrote, hi, Ed, this isn't a fee, it's a fine. If you want to impose a fine, in my opinion, you need to amend the bylaws to add the fine, or we might possibly be able to do it through commission regulation. The Wetlands Protection Bylaw does allow the Concom to adopt regulations, and your non-criminal disposition bylaw refers to penalties for various Board of Health regulations and amounts as stated in the regulations. So we may be able to do something similar here, and basically in Captivation Commission rules and regulations. And then she also said, with respect to fees for future reference, I would check with Lucy to see if town meeting has accepted General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 22F, which seems implicit in the bylaw. It looks like we suggested the bylaw review revision committee back in 2017 that this may be something to consider to help provide some flexibility with regard to setting fees. I have asked Lucy to look and see if there's any record of town meeting actually that being in front of town meeting and being accepted. I haven't heard, heard a yes or no from her yet, but I know that that's a decent amount of research to be done. So, you know, that being said, I mean, if the select board wanted to approve a $300 fine ahead of time, depending on, you know, with the caveat that, okay, that be inserted in, whether it's a bylaw, you know, a Concom rules or regulations, or some other form that, you know, once that form is approved, it can go into effect and they're not waiting to have the dollar amount approved. But, you know, just to, for the select board to say, yeah, we approved the $300 fine, you know, therefore it is now in effect, isn't really the case.
Okay.
And, and, and what, you know, and what I'm, would like is, you know, I'm sure Lucy will get back to me by the, you know, no later than the end of this week, but, you know, if I know whether that Mass General Law section has been adopted or not, I'll just return, I'll turn back to Michelle and say, okay, it has been accepted, or no, we have no, we have no record of that being accepted, how's the best way for us to move forward? And I, I'm, I'm one that, if you can keep items like this out of the bylaws and do them through, you know, rules or regulations, or some other manner that you don't have to wait for once or twice a year for a town meeting to approve, I think you're better off. So, I mean, that, that would be kind of the caveat I would turn around and, and ask Michelle at that point in time is, okay, either Mass General Laws, Section 22F, has or hasn't been adopted, you know, what, now what do you think is our best option, either through rules or regulations or some other manner, rather than going back to the bylaw, of implementing this? And do you have any examples maybe of other communities that have done it? Or are we stuck with going back and adjusting one of the bylaws?
And she was very definitive that it cannot be part of the conservation fee schedule, right?
Yes, it is not a fee.
Yeah, because that, that is, I'm pretty sure that is exactly what they were hoping to do, because that really only required select board approval, I believe.
Correct. And that was the original question that I had, I had reached out to Michelle on.
No action we need to take right now, you going to let us know?
What's that?
So there's no action we really have to take right now, right?
Well, I mean, you don't have to, if, if you wanted to, you could say, yes, you know, a motion would be something like, yes, we think the $300 fine is, you know, would be a fair amount to be inserted into the appropriate instrument, whether that be rules or regulations, something else, or into a, a specific bylaw to make it law.
I would recommend that we vote on the amount tonight, and at least, not knowing exactly where it's going to sit, or what the, what the appropriate home is for it, but I would like, you know, not to let this just hang out and keep coming back to it, let's just agree on, on the amount, and then figure out later on through the work that Lucy and Michelle may have to do, where, where it's best placed.
You like to make that into a motion, Chris?
Okay, sure. Okay, what would that motion sound like? Okay, I move that, what, that we approve a, a wetlands bylaw enforcement fine in the amount of $300 per day, with the understanding that we need to find the best instrument to implement that.
Perfect.
Very good.
I'll second it.
Right. Any further comments?
Francine?
Yep.
I mean, that, that doesn't, it seems like it's just too loose for me. I would prefer to wait until we had some meat around it to decide where it's going to go, because it may end up somewhere that we look back and say, man, that's not what I was thinking when I did this. How long would it take to get that information? If it's just one meeting away, shouldn't we wait? It's not going to, you know, nothing's going to happen in the next two weeks, that can't wait.
Well, it's either going to be some rule and regulation paper that has to be created, or it's going to be a bylaw, those are probably the only couple of choices, right?
I, I don't know the answer to that, Chris, that's why I'm kind of, you know, I, I hate to vote on something that we're really not sure of. I mean, I don't mind the fine, but I'd like to have some context around it.
Well, I, I thought Chris implied it was contingent upon whatever is the next step in terms of required documentation for it. And so this wouldn't be in effect until, until we found the home for it, so to speak.
But do we have to vote on that home, or is somebody else going to decide, like Michelle, and, and, you know? So that's what my concern is, we may vote the fine, and in the end, we, we don't agree with the home for it.
I guess I see them as two separate issues, I mean, I, I mean, if we agree on the fine, we'll, we'll find the right home for it. I mean, we have to find the right home for it somehow.
Yeah, I just don't see the, the rush to do it right now without knowing that information. As we always say, I'm only one vote, so don't worry.
I'm just wondering if, are we basically giving a nod to the Conservation Commission to have a $300 per day fine, however that ends up being, you know, whatever, however that ends up, you know, being recommended in terms of a document or whatever? I mean, is that what the request is, to just give a nod to them, to the amount for this fine for this new bylaw?
That's, that's how I see it, yeah.
He said for this new bylaw, but we're not sure it's going to be a new bylaw. We, we don't know the home.
Well, no, we didn't, it's an approved bylaw, we just haven't gotten it back from the Attorney General yet. So a violation of the bylaw, but we're not saying that this 300 is going to be a bylaw. In fact, we're being told, no, it actually is not advised.
Right, yeah, I'm just not sure why, why we need to rush through it right now.
Yeah.
I mean, the Conservation Commission isn't going to do anything with it until they find a home for it, right?
What do you think, Chris?
I, I don't know, to me, it's just one more thing that we, we put off and we have to keep coming back to. I just want to put some closure on a few things myself, but.
Any other comments? But can you just repeat the motion, please?
Did you write that down, Ed?
What's that?
Motion, Ed?
I think you're breaking up, but I think you asked me to read it?
Yeah.
A motion to approve a wetlands bylaw enforcement fine of $300 a day, with the understanding that we need to find the appropriate instrument to place it in.
Or to implement it, yeah.
All right, what do you want to do? Do you want to vote on it? We have a motion, a second, any further comments, questions? All right, let's vote and see where people stand.
Tishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Roland, aye.
Martin, aye.
All right, Groden, aye.
All right, pass is four to one.
Okay, you can just update us on what they say. The next item is the Hazard Mitigation Committee, and you're assembling members for this committee, and we'll be getting some sort of an invite. Is that where it's standing?
Yes, and so, so far, I know it's you, Rini, from the select board, Brittany did volunteer again from the conservation, oh God, there was somebody else, oh, the EMD had been recommended, so done from that. They had suggested a, someone from the Board of Health or the Health Director, and with all this craziness, I don't know if that is going to be possible or not. And I have reached out to Ty and Bond, yeah, not Ty and Bond, Fussin' O'Neil, excuse me, and, and asking, you know, who else that they would recommend or have seen in the past that make these work well, and what number of people do they recommend for like an optimum amount? So as soon as I hear back from that, I will let you know, and I will also reach out to any of the other committees that it might be pertinent to, for that core team.
Yeah, it just feels like we need to get this underway. I mean, I would hope that we could schedule a meeting, I realize that holidays are coming right up upon us, though, so it may not be possible before the holidays.
No, I, I would envision that it's going to be the beginning of January.
Yeah, when you do contact Fussin' O'Neil, let's get a date. Now, we need to get this committee going, and I do think we should reach out to the Board of Health and ask them to nominate a member, and also planning, this, this has a lot to do with climate, might be good to have a highway person too, for that matter. But I, I think we need to get going. And water.
I think, I think highway would definitely be good.
Yep, and water.
They make sense.
Maybe, yeah. What's the timeframe to, what's the timeframe to get this done again?
June 30th.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but we applied for this with the help of Fussin' O'Neil, and that was, but this next section or next plan between now and June is not to implement a project, but to do an assessment of the need for something and assemble a proposal that needs to be submitted by the end of June, is that right?
Right, yeah, you basically identify a plan, and that plan will, shall we say, point you in different areas that the core team and the town believe would be, let's see, how would you say it? Might be impacted by, you know, climate change, whether that be floods, you know, high winds like we've seen before, items like that. like we've seen before, items like that, you know, are, are there areas where there are, you know, culverts that seem to be inadequate, or, or, you know, or any areas, you know, under roads or what have you, that may be impacted, and, you know, should be addressed for future planning to mitigate possible damages from changing weather events.
Yeah, we talked about this at the Open Space Review Committee the other night, we talked about the sort of confluence of things that are happening, we have a focus on the water protection, which was highly rated in the master plan feedback, protection of our water supply, we have the Barnes Aquifer project being done by the Open Space, and, you know, this particular project, so there could be a lot of really good tie-ins between all these different initiatives, so I just think the sooner we get, get this going, the better, if we can plan an early January meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the theory being that once you have this in place, if you can identify grants that may be able to address some of the areas that you've noted in your plan, that
You want to do that, you can.
makes those grant applications that much stronger.
You were recurring invite for a benefit I have with Stryker. Sorry.
Yeah, okay, so, anything more on the Hazard Mitigation Committee? Okay, so next up is revenues and expenditures, hopefully in January, we'll get an update on where we're at in the fiscal year.
Yes, I think once we have at least an interim town accountant along, we'll be able to do that.
Okay, and then we have approval for the senior center closure the week after Christmas for vacation, so that came last year also.
Yeah, Joan is going to take the week after Christmas off, so I did remember that there were some issues around that last year, the two options are, okay, she can have someone come in and pay them to be in the council on aging, in case any needs arise, or the other option would be, since the Council of Aging falls under the Select Board, is the Select Board could approve the COA being closed for that week.
Yeah, but last year, didn't she end up taking benefit of time, I mean, I think there was some concerns and issues that were, arose last year about this, the people have concerns about the senior center being closed, and what about the other two employees of the senior center, will they still be working, or no?
Well, they could still be working doing outreach, it's just that they can do that from home, they don't have to, you know, come in and physically be in the Council of Aging, which would add additional hours onto what they normally work.
They're currently working from home, aren't they, they're not coming in, are they?
No, but if the board didn't vote to close the Council of Aging for that week, then theoretically, you would want someone there to be in there to answer phones and emails and whatever.
Any comments about this?
Is there a way for them to retrieve messages from home, I mean, for the people who are working from home to kind of take cover? Ed?
I would not know that answer, Francine.
Hopefully, there'd be some sort of a voicemail that would alert someone to another way to get help.
I would think so.
Well, yeah, yeah, she, yeah, she could leave a message on the, the voicemail that they are closed for that week, and if they need immediate assistance, to reach out to so and so.
That would work, that's good.
Yeah, okay.
Want to make a motion, Ed?
Yeah. So?
Would like to.
I'll make a motion that the senior center be closed those four days between Christmas and New Year's.
Is there a second?
Second.
Francine, and then Matt, any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Fish, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Rowland, nay.
Hart, nay.
Groden, aye. The next item is the Town Administrator Evaluation Update, so just the process, basically the same thing that we did last summer, we basically asked Ed to fill out a self-evaluation form, which he's done and submitted back to us, and I also, what the PQB says is the process, is that each of the Select Board members fills out an evaluation of the Town Administrator, and then the Chair averages out the scores, and then we have an open session, a meeting, and provide feedback on the evaluation. Last year, I also sent the form to the people that report to Ed, inviting them optionally to provide any feedback that they like, and so I basically followed the exact same procedure this year, we've gotten feedback from a lot of the folks that report to Ed, we've gotten Ed's back, and so the process will be that by the 28th, I believe, all the Select Board members should have their evaluation to me, and then I'll compile them, and share all the evaluations that I get from everybody with the Select Board, and so that's the process, we did get a request from a person within the municipal government that was not included, because was not someone that reported to Ed, and asked about providing feedback, and then that person wrote back and said that, you know, kind of never mind, has withdrawn the request to provide feedback, so I just thought I'd review this publicly, and see if people had suggestions, or people wanted to alter the plan, the only thing that's more or less different from what the PQB says is the process is getting additional feedback from people that directly report to Ed.
I mean, I know, we talked about it briefly to get it on the agenda, but, at least my history is, when you have somebody at a high level position, say, when I was the director, and I had associate director, assistant, and manager, you know, but also the people that they serve, and I was on a campus, so I would reach out to the people that these people touch with and served, because to me, they're all customers, and you need to get a good rounded review, good, bad, or indifferent, you just can't say, I want these people, because they're maybe all good, all bad, I don't know the situation, but seems like if we get more customers, if you will, and department heads that don't report to Ed are still customers in the town hall, or even people out in the public, because Ed has outreach out in the public too, he's a public figure, probably the highest public figure in the town, so to me, if we get more than just the direct reports, that would give a much fairer review, again, good, bad, or indifferent, I don't know the outcome.
I think when we first talked about this, I think the comment that Francine had made was that we're elected by the public, and, so I don't, I, I think at the time, that's why we didn't do anything differently, we didn't reach out to the public, we didn't post anything on the website or anything like that, so is anybody want to suggest a different process at this point?
Just to John's point, it seems to me that, I mean, if we were to use, you'd have to use a different set of questions, or a different form, or so, I mean, I don't see anybody from the public being able to fill out that form, and have any knowledge of the, the details of the Town Administrator job responsibilities, really, I mean, they could provide some anecdotal commentary, but that might be interesting, but I, I would not see them filling out the forms and, you know, including that in there.
I, I would agree with it, even anecdotal, like you said, if, you know, the Town Administrator helped with a specific project, and they wanted to comment saying, here's a great job, they did this, this, and the other thing, like the Town Moderator may want to comment on interactions with the Town Administrator, and to me, that would be good feedback, it would have to be maybe more free form, or a very basic form, that they'd have to reply to, but it seems like we're just going down a narrow path, and that's not going to give us the best overall view, my comments, but that's just from history.
Do you or anybody else want to make a suggestion in terms of the process, or doing something different than we, or timetable wise than we're currently doing?
I mean, if we followed sort of John's theory here, it would seem to me that we'd have to extend this a little bit, beyond the, the meeting of the 29th of December.
That's still two weeks away, I think if we ask for feedback, and ask people, and we could basically ask if people want to put feedback in, to send it to the Chair of the Select Board, and she would have all that feedback there, that she can then, you know, share with us. Because we're representing the public, as Francine says, so why can't the public, you know, send their comments to us?
Any comments?
Well, I meant that we were representing the, the, the public, in that our thinking reflected more, and, you know, we all talk to people in the community, we get information, and we bring it forward, I think casting a bigger net, to me, just, you know, makes for a much more complicated process, I don't know that it's necessarily going to result in a, a better outcome.
But we don't know if it will or won't, right, I, I would hate to do something and find out if, if somebody said, boy, if you would have talked to me, I would have given you these glowing reviews, or I would have said, hey, there's issues here, we, we don't know that, especially the people in the town hall.
John, do you think that any feedback you get additional from what we've already sought will change your evaluation?
I think it would add to it, especially, you've got elected town officials that aren't involved with this, they, they work with the Town Administrator on a regular basis, I don't know if their comments are going to be pro or con, but you've got, you know, you've got, like I said, the Town Moderator, who has a lot of interaction, he was involved with, say, the special town meetings, I'm sure he'll have some feedback, people like that, those are, to me, important comments to get from people.
Well, I could see, I could see extending to people who are not direct reports to Ed, but going out to the public, public, I, I think is a very
That's a good compromise.
Yeah, I'm not in support of going out to the public, that's not, I mean, I don't think that's appropriate.
But that'd be a good compromise.
Because we don't, we don't have a, yeah, yeah, okay.
So do we want to determine who those people are, we've mentioned the moderator, do we want to suggest who they might be?
Oh, who's elected, you've got the
Treasurer.
Treasurer, Collector, Assessor.
Right. Town Clerk.
Town Clerk, yeah. Town Moderator. There's four right there. How about the COA?
The PBV
Yeah.
Is elected.
So, just so you know, this is going to change the timetable, I mean, if people are fine with that, okay, but just to remind you that I'm a health care collector, right now, we're right in the middle of a pandemic, and about to dispense a large number of vaccines, and right now, we have a process that puts the collection of the Select Board evaluations to be the 28th of December, which is right around the corner with two holidays, so I will not be able to do this within a two-week timeframe, so if you're generating a list of people to reach out to by email, I'm going to ask someone to delegate who might have the time to do that, and I want to ask people very seriously, will the feedback, and John, you already did pass in your evaluation to me, will the feedback that you're going to get from this determine your evaluation, the, the PQB process says that I average the score of the five Select Board members, and that becomes the score for his evaluation, so if you honestly think that the feedback you'll get from anybody, and casting a wider net will impact your evaluation, then it's worth doing, and if it's not, then I would suggest that it's busy work, you know, I mean, I think it's great to get the feedback, but I'm curious as to the, I mean, there wasn't any comment about this last year, and it's the exact same process, so, anyway, I just wanted to question, because I don't want to do it, if it just feels like it's another thing that we have to do, in the middle of the season.
I can't answer if it'll affect my evaluation, but I think the big component in my mind is inclusiveness, that people feel they're part of the process, and they're able to give feedback, and the feedback is looked at, and it's made part of the thought process, if you've got people sitting on the periphery that says, you don't give me any chance to give feedback, you know, what am I, what am I doing here, and there was that four or five people I think were the key right there, that we talked about.
But I think one of the issues, and maybe sometime next year, we can talk about it, because people have talked to me about having a charter in town, one of the things, and I've thought a lot about this, because I've worked in the private sector my entire career, with the exception of being at UMass, and I've always asked myself, like, why is the private sector so different from municipal government, and there are a lot of reasons why it is, but I know in the town of Southampton, we have a, we have a municipal office structure, where you have employees of the Board of Health that report to the, employees of the Health Department that report to their own board, we have the principal assessor that reports to the Board of Assessors, we have a Town Clerk and a Treasurer who report to the people, and so, the people that actually, the, the reason why it's so different from the private sector is because there's a reporting up structure, where it's, feels like there's more impact, I think, because people that report to me, I have some impact over what happens, so I think the difficulty, I think, in our government, but the town consistently wants to have elected positions, and to have the structure that they do, is that it makes it very difficult to have a reporting structure, where everybody reports up to a CEO or a Town Administrator, so I just find that that, you know, that matters in terms of say, it matters in terms of, you know, Ed's ability to impact their activity, and I think that also, in my mind, also impacts the evaluation structure, that's just my opinion. Folks, if you're, you know, would like to compile a list, and actually, I would just ask if there might be a volunteer who, if there's agreement by the board to, to cast a wider net in terms of feedback, then I would just ask if somebody was in a position to be able to make that happen, and, and then send the emails around, or whatever, I was thinking it was always, even a little bit confusing, in the last two days, I forwarded a lot of information to you all, and I'm hoping you got it all, and can put it all into perspective.
Yeah, I mean, again, if we did it, it would only be those four or five positions we've mentioned, and if people want to do that.
It would not include the assessors, the assessor, because the assessor is not an elected position, so it would be Treasurer, Town Clerk, Town Moderator, I'm not even sure it would include the PBV, except that we don't have, you know,
No, I don't want to include
I would take, I would take them off.
No, I don't want to include the PBV, but I don't get why it wouldn't include the assessor.
Right.
Or, I mean, did we ask the building inspector too?
He reports to Ed.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
I did send it to him.
And Board of Health, and Director of Health, Health Director?
Yep, Joan, Library Director, Council on Aging, Building Inspector, Police Fire, Highway, Assistant Administrator.
Yeah, so I mean, I would, so I mean, I would add, I would add Assessor, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, School Principal, no?
Moderator, I, I would think, now, does Joan report directly to the Town Administrator?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I forwarded you her feedback today.
Yeah, I did see that, so what, what do we have, Francine, four people, did you write those down?
I read Treasurer, Town Clerk, Town Moderator, Assessor.
Then I would suggest if we're going to do this, we put out maybe two questions or three questions and not leave it totally wide open-ended, or we're going to have just a free-for-all.
Or just ask for some feedback on interactions and performance from their point of view. That's all. Those two. We don't need to go into a lot of detail. I just want to give them an opportunity to be part of the process, since we're in town hall there at that level.
That's fine. I'm not volunteering to take it down, I'll tell you that. I don't have time.
If I, if somebody sends me the emails, if I get the emails, I'll be glad to send it out. And if we're talking about two questions like that, that's fine. I don't think it'll take long to send it out. It'd take more time when we get it back to read it. So I would say it depends on how this goes. If I'm the only one, then we won't do it. If more than, if three or more of us want it, then I'll do it. So let's, maybe we figure that out first. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I said this before, but I'm only one vote. So, you know, I think it's important to bring these up, and whatever the group decides, the group decides, you know?
And I, I think I could go with the idea, just for the principle of inclusiveness and participation, but I'm not sure that it will really give me any greater insight than I think I have, but I may be wrong. So I'm willing to try it. But I'm, I'm not, I'm going to base my own evaluation on my personal interaction a whole lot more than I am anybody else's feedback. Let's put it that way.
Mine was Chris.
Agreed. And, you know, my, it may just line up with what all the other comments are, you know? Like I said, good, bad, or indifferent. It's, the inclusiveness, to me, is the important part. Let people be part of the process.
Okay.
Okay, John, if you'd like to send out a couple of questions to people that haven't had an opportunity to provide feedback and ask if they can get that feedback, I don't know, I think that timetable is, we're either going to push it out, or we're going to have a short turnaround.
I think a short turnaround is fine, you know? I don't have an issue. Now, this Town Clerk, Assessor, Treasurer, Collector, and Moderator, is that the four, Francine?
Well, but the assessor isn't elected. That becomes the whole thing.
But you can't leave out one person who's working in the same building. I mean...
All right.
Gary Swanson, then. She's, she's not elected.
Nope. Board of Health. Health Director, not the Board of Health.
The Custodian.
Well, Custodians at a different level, you know?
Not these days.
Well, I mean, are we going to get the clerks? If we get the Custodian, are we going to get the clerks? So I would say a department-level type of person.
Okay. Head of the department, okay.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll get it out tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak to that? Okay, so next on the agenda is... Any other business that cannot wait? We talked about the PCF, the interim accountant. Ed, is that something that, did you send that to us or no?
Yes, I did.
Okay, was that in a separate email today?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's also in the Dropbox.
Okay, all right, let me just bring that up then. Francine, you're our PQB...
I know, but I didn't...
You didn't get it?
No, I...
No, I have, I have the temporary accountant.
Yeah.
That's the one.
That's it. That's all there is? It's not, it's not the other one? Okay. All right, so this is for Regina Gillis as the interim town accountant.
Temporary. Temporary.
Temporary, okay, not the interim, temporary. Okay. At the rate of, I'm reading this from my phone, because I don't have it on my screen. For 24 hours per week. And I don't see a rate in here.
It's in there. It is 4640 per hour, which includes the staffing agency fee.
Okay. So there it is.
And it's not, it's a non-benefited position. Yeah, she doesn't work, she doesn't get paid.
Right. Is it written as up to 12 weeks?
Nope.
No, the rules and regulations require that to be, the limit is 12 weeks unless you reappoint.
Can it be less than 12 weeks?
Oh, it can be, yeah. Yeah, if we found a permanent town accountant, and whether it's three weeks or six weeks, yeah, that's when this position would end.
And I'm looking here. I don't see, I know you gave us the rate, but I don't see it on this form.
It is about two-thirds of the way down. You've got three columns. There's present status, the middle one's proposed status, and the proposed status, you got the first line is number of weekly hours.
It's this small print, 4840, 40 per hour. Yes. I got it.
The more, the more we write in it, yeah, the smaller the font gets.
Well, the other thing is that it looks like part of the form.
My thank you.
Yeah, but anyway, I have it now, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve Regina Gillis for the temporary town accountant.
I'll second it.
And that would be conditional upon the PQB approval on Thursday night, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Any further comments about that? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll, and I.
Mark, nine.
And Groden, nine. That's great. Thank you again. I'm glad that that's, we'll have somebody next week.
Yeah. Ed, could you maybe just forward her CV? I don't know that that was in the package.
What's that?
Could you forward her CV? I don't know that that was in the package.
Her CV?
Her resume. Or was it in the Dropbox? I didn't see it on my email, but...
No, no, I can do that.
Any other items that can't wait until the next select board meeting? Did you have a question, Tammy?
Yes. Are you going to vote at Tammy Malunas, 298 College Highway? You were supposed to vote Ed to be the interim accountant up to that date. This is supposed to end...
December 22nd.
Yeah.
You're wonderful, Tammy. Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you. I thought there was a second thing, and I couldn't remember what it was.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion to extend Ed's interim position until the 22nd?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll, and I.
And Groden, nine. Thank you. I had one other thing I wanted to just ask. There was a letter that came in, Ed, from Jim in the Housing Authority or the Housing Committee, asking a little bit about the history of the committee in terms of initiatives. I don't know whether or not you were able to direct him to anybody for answers, or he was looking for the role of the committee in terms of the HUD requirements, and whether or not historically people have worked within these requirements, or whether initiatives can be proposed outside of them. Was there anybody that you were able to refer him to?
Not that I can think of immediately. I'd have to do a little research on that.
Okay. Well, I have this right here. I think I'll just forward it back to you, because it came in a while ago. And I just want to make sure that, you know, they're, the housing is really looking, we've has this CPC money that has to do with housing, haven't really been able to spend it. Previous Housing Committee was able to do some things, but, you know, they're really looking to see where the parameters of what they're able to do is. And I just hope that we can help direct them to some place that can provide them with answers, because I didn't know. I do know that the previous chair of the Housing Committee did when she departed, because she was leaving, leaving with so much information that she's learned. We did ask her to write up sort of a summary of activities and things for the new committee, since it was a brand-new committee all around. So hopefully, they've had a chance to share that.
And, you know, a couple of meetings ago on the planning board, Jim Cena came and did a presentation. It was a very good presentation, and it was recorded. So if anybody wants to go back a couple of meetings to listen to that, I think they'd get a good... Pardon me?
Know what the presentation was about?
Yeah, they wanted to find out different ways that they could bring affordable housing into town. And they talked a lot, Jim talked a lot about, should we start looking at smaller pieces of land so to make it more affordable for a builder to build a house that would then become more affordable for somebody to purchase? And there was one of the builders, Mr. Gailher was there, and he offered his ideas back and forth, too. So it took quite a while, but it was very interesting. So if you want, if you're interested in that, go back a couple of meetings, I think it was two meetings ago.
And I do know that the chair of the Housing Committee had gone to CPC, and they got money to bring all, have a, you know, like a pizza party or something at Paisanos, and they invited all the builders. They were trying to find out what are the barriers to why you're not able to do affordable housing? And so anyway, they've been trying a lot of different ways, from Habitat for Humanity to looking at smaller properties when they go on the market in Southampton, they get scooped up very, very quickly.
One of the big barriers was the cost of a building lot.
Yeah.
You know, if you're paying $125,000, $150,000 for a building lot, you've got to build an expensive house on it in order to, you know, recoup the money.
Yeah. Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're on the request, at least, to see if we could point them in the right direction. All right, let me just print up the, do they have the agenda in front of them?
Yeah.
Leave it back where I wanted to read it. Next is, I imagine it's all the licenses, the common...
Licenses and permits.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we had about three or four of them in our packet. Ed?
Yeah, you've got yearly, well, it's under yearly renewals, but under common vic, victular, there's a common victular that needs improvement for Good Eats To Go, actually for this calendar year, because they hadn't gotten one when they opened up. Then there would be a renewal common victular for Good Eats To Go for 2021. There would be a renewal common victular for the Stop and Save. There would be a renewal common victular for Mckell Coffee Company, and a renewal common victular for Cumberland Farms.
Okay, and all the paperwork is complete for all of those?
Yes, it is. Yeah, Cumberland Farms was the last one to come in, and I can't remember, they came in Thursday or Monday.
So the other restaurants in town...
Needed common victular licenses.
Sorry, I interrupted. The other restaurants in town are all set?
I think we did a lot of them.
We did them last, last meeting.
Okay. So we're all set?
Yeah.
So you want to take the common victular first and then do the alcohol second, or do you want to just do them all together?
Why don't you separate them out? Because, but actually, when you get to the alcohol and other, when you get to Glendale Ridge Vineyard, if you would approve their alcohol and their common victular, but approve their entertainment conditionally on us actually receiving the check for the entertainment license.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion, then, to approve the yearly renewals for the common victular?
Be careful, be careful of that. We might want to either, well, you could separate it, or you could say, a new, approve a new common victular for Good Eats To Go 2020, and renewal for Good Eats To Go 2021, Stop and Save, Mckell Coffee Company, and Cumberland Farms.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
So John and Chris, any further questions about those? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll, and I.
Mark, nine.
Groden, nine. Okay, so moving on to the alcohol, would someone like to make a motion to approve the three alcohol licenses?
Well, remember, we've got, we've got that Glendale Ridge, it's a common special...
Yeah, and it's alcohol, alcohol and other. So the motion might be to renew, renew for 2021 Camp Yan Association for Alcohol, Common Victular, Entertainment, and Co-op licenses and permits, and to approve Tin Can Alley for Alcohol, Common Victular, Entertainment, Co-op, OTE Billiard, and OTE Bowling for 2021, and then approve Glendale Ridge Vineyard for an alcohol license and a common victular license for 2021, and an entertainment license conditionally upon receiving the check to pay for the entertainment license.
Well said.
I was going to say, just somebody say, so moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Chris and Francine, any further questions, comments? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll, and I.
Mark, nine.
Thank you. Just a reminder, you know, we don't have a lot of businesses in Southampton, so it'd be great to support these businesses, especially now during the pandemic, where they've been negatively impacted, many of them. Warrants, Chris?
Yep. Okay, we have four warrants tonight. Vendor payable warrant, W 2123, in the amount of $566,469.50. A payroll deduction warrant, which includes the county retirement fees. This is PD 2122A, and it's in the amount of $181,243.59. A payroll warrant, P 2124, in the amount of $280,007.59. And then the payroll deduction warrant, PD 2124, in the amount of $44,206.22.
Thank you. Any questions about that? And as usual, we got the details on those in our packet. We don't have any documents to sign, but we do have two sets of minutes, August 4th and August 11th. Would folks have a chance to read through those?
Yep.
Would you like to do a make a motion?
I'd move to accept the minutes of August 4th and August 11th.
Second.
Second.
Francine, and then John, any comments, questions, edits? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll, and I.
Mark, nine.
And Groden, nine. And we have some pending items. Anybody have any questions about pending items? We talked about the Greenway a little bit. Any updates on any of those items, Ed?
No.
Okay, we have select board meetings on the 29th of December, and then the 12th and the 26th of January. This time, we have open time for the public. Select Board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment. Anybody would like to speak from the public? I'm not hearing anything, so any correspondences? Ed, do we have anything that...
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else? We do have an executive session item. It's, oh, Tammy, would you like to say something?
Yes.
Oh, you're just saying goodbye? All right, Merry Christmas. Um, we do have a Master in Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Number two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel uh, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator. Uh, we will not be returning to open session afterwards. Um, so can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Francine and Matt, all in favor?
Tishvani.
Bowls eye.
Roll and I.
Mark and I.
And Groden I. So I have the, the link for the other Zoom and so, uh, we'll just, how much time do you want before we join back in?
We have five minutes.
Five minutes, that sounds good.
Then we can eight, eight forty, okay?
Eight forty, sounds good. All right.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too, Ed.
Here.
Brady, if you have any problems getting back in, just text me.
All right, thanks a lot, Ed. Take good care.
Yep.
I will. See ya.
Bye.